Good evening, I will call this meeting to order. If you will kindly stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Allison.
Here.
Carmandy.
Here.
Fishbein. Laughin.
Here.
Regan.
Here.
Reynolds.
Here.
Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Marone.
Here. Onto the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, item 3N has been withdrawn, and I move that we approve or accept consent agenda items 3A through 3M.
Second.
All right, motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. No items removed from the consent agenda. Onto item 5, public question and answer. Does anyone have a question for the council? Okay, moving on to number 6, discussion of old business. Oh, I'm sorry, please go right ahead. Good evening. If you could give your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, Anne Marie Rivard, 60 Mansion Road. I just wanted to introduce our group. This is Girl Scout Troop 60262. We are high school freshmen here, and they have been in Girl Scouts since they were kindergartners. They are here working on their democracy badge for senior Girl Scouts. So this is their last step to attend a town government meeting. We've already done information about federal government. We've attended the state capitol. So this is our last step. When we looked at the agenda, it was really fortuitous because we see there is potentially discussion on the town pool. And that triggered our thoughts that when they were back, when they were Brownies, which is second grade, they decided to do a take action project about the town pool. And they thought about ways they could help, and they wanted to pitch in because they all felt very strongly that the town pool was a great resource for our community, and they wanted to try and help save it. So we went back. We looked in our Google Drive, and we found that letter that they mailed to you as the town council back then. I have a copy of it here, and you can see the little signatures all on the bottom from when they were eight years old. And now they're all almost 15. And this is the letter that they wrote to you guys. And we did get a very nice letter back, which I believe was from Councilman Servoni at the time, about the letter that they sent in. So they were very excited to hear back from the council back then. And we're glad to hear that their voices were heard back then, and we want to make sure they're still heard today. So here is what they wrote seven years ago, and they still all believe this message today, maybe with slightly more eloquent words. But here's the words of their Brownie troop.
So we said, "Dear Town Council, we are Brownie Troop 60262 from Cook Hill School in Wallingford. We have noticed that there is a problem in our town. The town pool has some cracks in it, and we were hoping that it can get fixed so it is safe for kids to swim. It is important that we keep the town pool open so kids have a place to cool down on hot summer days. We want to make sure that all kids have a safe place to swim this summer, not just those that have a pool at their house. We understand that it would cost a lot of money to fix the pool, but would like to talk about fundraisers to raise the money. This is what we can do to help. We can spread the word about the need to raise money for this project, and we can donate our time to help work on this project. We hope you will support this idea. Please let us know if you're going to discuss this problem. We would like to participate if we can. Thank you for reading our letter, Cook Hill Brownie Troop 60262."
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mrs. Rivard, for bringing that forward. Anything that you're passionate about from age eight to age 15 is something worthy of consideration. So I appreciate your community spirit, and I appreciate you as the leaders of the troop, what you do for the girls.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also here for the same subject, the swimming pool, the community pool.
Give your name and address for the record, please.
Patricia Corbett. A little bit shorter here. 310 North Main Street in Wallingford, and I own the art gallery here. And I've done a lot of art, and I've done a lot of swimming. I'm a senior. I'm speaking for a lot of the seniors here in town who did frequent the swimming pool when it was up and going. And the families, many, many people that I've talked to in the past few years that the pool has been down have said that, "Oh, you know, I used to go swimming there when I was a kid. Then when I got married, my kids went, and now my grandchildren are going." And it's all been such a disappointment because as our mayor so eloquently announced at the art reception about two weeks ago, we are the number one town in Connecticut. And I think the community pool would keep us there. It's the most important and valuable thing for seniors especially who have arthritis, like I do. They all say, "Oh, you're in such good shape." Well, I went swimming every day when it was open in the summertime, and I've really missed it terribly. In fact, I had to leave this winter and go to a place where there was a swimming pool so that I could have my arthritis subdued. So I'm here to really beg you. And I also am willing to donate paintings that I have of the town of Wallingford as an auction possibility for raising funds for the swimming pool. So some of my friends are here, my artist friends from the Wallingford Arts and Cultural Alliance Art Exhibit. And we are so anxious to do anything possible that we can to support the cause. It's so important for the children. And you can charge an annual fee. That's what a lot of towns do. They charge annual fees. You can go according to their income. You know, for those who don't, the less fortunate, they can maybe, you know, be accepted in a lesser scale. I'm willing to pay, and, you know, at least something. But I just wanted to let you know that we really, it's a most important item that we have here in our town. And we thank you so much for considering it seriously. And let us know what we can do to help raise money.
Thank you very much.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, just to
Please.
refer back to Ms. Corbett's kind remarks, I was referring to the Kiplinger article that was recently published that named Wallingford the number one town in New England to retire to.
Excellent, thank you, Mayor.
I was shocked to hear that. I just found that out today.
Well, thank you very much for that. Anyone else for public comment? Okay, moving on to old business. Mr. Farrell, do you have an update on Hidden Brook Lane?
Attorney Small has noted that the appeal period has not yet run, and she's working on it. She's been pretty busy, but she is working on it. But the appeal period has not run.
Perfect.
Calling to the bottom.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item 7, discussion of possible action regarding the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wallingford and IAFF Local 1326 from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028. Good evening, gentlemen. If you could introduce yourselves for the record.
Yes, good evening, Jim Hutt, Town HR Director.
Good evening, Jim Buck, Fire Chief.
We're here tonight to seek your approval of a successor agreement with Local 1326, the firefighters' union. The contract is to run from July 1, 2025 to June 30, 2028. Some of the substantive issues that were tentatively agreed to by the parties is change from the fire prevention division to the fire marshal's office where applicable in the contract. Increase sick family usage to five days. Establish a sick leave donation bank for firefighters to use. There's a language on increasing sick leave incentive to $1,000 plus one vacation day for employees that don't use any sick time. And it incorporates the Connecticut paid sick leave language into the contract. Wages, wage adjustment for July 1, 2025 of $45 plus a 2% GWI. July 1, '26, a weekly wage adjustment of $40 plus a 2% GWI. And July 1, '27, a weekly wage adjustment of $40 plus a 2% general wage increase. Increases minimum manpower from 13 to 14 firefighters, including two sworn officers, and increases EMTs from two to four per working shift. Establishes language for the senior deputy fire marshal working as the fire marshal. And there's also operational changes to fire watch language in the contract. It also provides an on-call vehicle to employees in the fire marshal's office. It also increases the fire marshal's work week from 35 to 37.5 hours and revises work schedule hours and leave language for fire rescue and the EMS division employees throughout the contract. Bonuses for paramedics and EMTs. EMTs increase $100 each year on November 1, '25, November 1, '26, and November 1, '27. And paramedics, $250 each year on 11, '25, 11, '26, and 11, 1, '27. It also provides one-time opportunity for employees to regain medical control. Life insurance increases terminate D and D from $28,500, $3,000 to $33,500, $6,000. And for health insurance, employees' cost share increases to 16% by the end of the contract. It also provides current employees with access to the Firefighter Trust Delta Dental Plan. And, let's see. It also provides a college incentive for all employees of Local 1326. And there's also some language changes for light duty and for drug and alcohol testing. And I did provide you a copy of the red line version of the contract. If there's any questions, we'll be ready to respond.
Questions for the council? Counselor Tada?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hutt, the union vote on this contract, and what was the vote total?
It's my understanding, from talking to President Beach, it was unanimous.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Laughin?
Yeah, just the same way as we do with the police department. And the fire department has gone through a lot lately, and they've been doing an exceptional job. I'm going to move that we accept the tentative collective bargaining agreement between the town of Wallingford and IAFF Local 1326.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion? Any discussion from the public? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll?
Allison.
Yes.
Carmandy.
Yes.
Laughin.
Yes.
Regan.
Yes.
Reynolds.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Testa.
Yes.
Marone.
And I vote yes. Motion is unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Moving on to item 8.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve an appropriation of ARPA funds in the amount of $987,820, $350,000 to ARPA revenue, $350,000 to expense Fire Squad 8, $182,820 to revenue ARPA, and $182,820 to expense police cameras, and $455,000 to revenue ARPA as follows. $35,000 to Public Works snowplow, $15,000 to Public Works brush cutter, $35,000 to Public Works auto lift, $70,000 to Public Works crew cab flatbed truck, and $300,000 to Public Works class plow dump truck.
Second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. So Mayor, just to clarify, these are the items that were removed from the budget with the intent of spending ARPA money on them, correct?
That's correct. So the council had proposed to move some of those to the cap and non-fund, and some of those to, actually, a proposal for bonding. And instead, we have the ARPA money that we had allocated at the end of the last calendar year and thought that this would be a good use of that money.
All right, thank you very much. Discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing not anyone from the public? All right, back to the council. Let's have a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Moving on to number nine. Discussion on possible action of the community pool project. Good evening, Mr. Michaels.
Good evening. Kenny Michaels, Director of Parks and Recreation.
And before we get going, I will make a motion that we accept the bid, the lowest bid as presented in our backup.
Second.
All right, Mr. Michaels? Go ahead. Please. Discussion on possible action to consider the project. Well, so if this is going to come back, go ahead, Mayor, I think I know where you're going with this. But this is going to come back in two, this is tonight is to accept the, to make a decision on the pool, and then it's going to come back to us at another point for the bonding. Okay.
Doesn't, yeah, it doesn't need, doesn't need to be that specific. I guess Counselor Testa, your mic might not have been on. The record can't.
Thank you. So we're here again, take two. We were here back in 2020 proposing the community pool park project to most of you. Some of you may be new to this or are new to this. But recently, we reopened the bidding for the community pool project as it's something that we think needs to be addressed, whether we do move forward or need to come up with an alternative plan. The bids did come back in. We had a construction analysis done over the summer, which kind of pointed us in the direction of close to 12 million for this project. The bid opening came in. Benton Construction, who was the low bid in 2020, came in again as the low bid in this project, for this time around at 9.3 million. What we're looking for today, I think you all know, as I've, you know, have been here before, is we're looking to proceed with this project. It's been an ultimate eyesore from a park standpoint and from a town amenity standpoint that we need to continue to provide some sort of service to the residents of the town. I'd like to thank the Girl Scout troop that came up and gave their support for the project, just like many other people have in the past and currently. This will make this a four-season destination. Currently, that property is really a one-season stop. It's nothing now, and there's nothing to it. This creates a four-season destination where we're going to have the pavilion, could be available for rentals. You'll have the playground that can be used year-round. The splash pad can almost be used through three seasons, weather depending. I mean, you could potentially open it Memorial Day to Labor Day. I mean, not this year, but weather permitting, you know, we could potentially have some place to cool off where, you know, the temps hit in the 80s in the early parts of the season prior to the pool opening. Programmatically, the pool will give us something again. Swim lessons. Our camps, a destination to go. Gives the residents an opportunity to exercise, to participate in swim lessons again, to get out there and stay active in the community. The project was sent out before you. The renditions are there. It does shrink the pool. I mean, we're at 40,000 square feet right now. A million gallons. The last time the pool was open, we were only using maybe a third of that. So it reduces the pool size to about a third but keeping the four lap lanes. We're adding the best part, I think, to the rendition and to the amenities is the splash pad. Just about a 3,000-square-foot splash pad. Based on the proposal and the bid, there is one thing I would remove. I'd remove the sand volleyball court. I don't think it's necessary, especially from a mechanical standpoint. I don't want to have sand being tracked into the splash pad and the filtration system and all that other stuff. So for me, I can save you all 40,000. I can remove the volleyball court. I think what I'm looking for today is your support, your vote, and the ability to move forward with this project.
Thank you. Questions from the council? Mr. Testa?
I'm very pleased to hear your proposals, sir. So are you suggesting, your department? Now, are you speaking for the Rec Commission as well? I mean, I just want to make sure we're all on the same page here.
I think they're going to follow the lead as to what you guys go through with. They're in support of the project, but they also understand that, obviously, if it does not go through, that we need to circle back and figure something out.
I understand.
So I think they're right behind us in this charge. I can't fully speak for them, but I'm going to speak for myself and my department.
Right.
This is what we want.
Well, I couldn't be happier to hear that. So the project, as originally conceived, bid, put out again for rebid, you're in favor of moving forward with, with the exception of taking out that volleyball court. And I agree with you there on the sand. Am I correct in that assumption?
Yes.
Okay. And what, in effect, what are, what are we able to do this evening? Or what potentially are we being asked to do this evening?
Yeah, so essentially, what you're being asked tonight is if you're interested in moving forward with the project in its entirety. And then the bond council would then draft up the bond. But they want to give some idea to the developer, what the, if we're going to move forward with the project or not. So they could get us slated for construction.
No, I understand that, but we can only act by votes.
Correct.
So if we all sat here and said, "Yeah, I'm ready to go forward," you know, what is the vote? Is the vote going to be to award the bid? Is the vote going to be, you know, because that's about all we could do, really?
Well, so the motion I made was to award the bid, right?
I missed that, I apologize.
Okay, no, no, that's fine. So that's what we would do tonight, and then we would have to fund it at a separate meeting, you know, for the
I'm okay with that. I just want to make sure I knew what I'm doing this evening.
Good questions.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Certainly. Other questions? Mr. Regan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Michaels.
Good evening.
What are the approximate annual costs to maintain this facility if it were to go through?
We haven't gotten the updated numbers yet. Based off of pricing of today for chemicals, updated hourly wages for, I mean, not even just the maintenance, but the staffing. So there would be a reduction from the chemical costs and the maintenance costs from the current pool, right, because we're going to be circulating less chlorine, less chemicals through the system than we were at a million gallons and 40,000 square feet, down to 13,000 gallons and 3,000 for the splash pad. Today's numbers, I don't have. I can find that out for you. But I don't have today's costs as far as what the chemicals would be for the pool.
How about for headcount?
Staffing, I believe we would reduce, the lifeguards would be down to eight, plus a supervisor, I believe, are what the numbers were. The splash pad doesn't need one. That's self-sustaining. So we would reduce the number from what we currently had at the pool, which I believe was like 12.
Do you know what the maximum capacity and number of people for the park would be approximately?
I don't. But again, I can get you that information.
So the question I would then have is, does it, is it necessary to then have police officers available or some type of security or something, depending on if you have a large gathering at a regular event, if it's open and you have 3, 4, 500 people there on a, you know, extremely hot, extremely busy weekend?
I don't think so because we've had that in the past at the old pool, and we haven't had to do it. Even with less parking. We're increasing the parking on this project by, I believe, it's like 34, 36 spaces. So it wasn't something that we had to deal with or address in the past, and I don't anticipate it being something we're going to have to address now.
Is it in our, tonight, having a discussion, Mr. Chairman, about potential fees, usage, resident passes, guest passes, day passes? I mean, is that all worked out? Or is that a later step?
I'll defer to Mr. Michaels.
So we didn't plan as far as, we didn't know where the project was going to go. So for my staff and my team to, we didn't put updates into what the fees were going to be as far as pool passes, annual passes, things to that extent. We do have the ability, though technology-wise, that has evolved since 2020, to have the capability to do day passes, seasonal passes, maybe two-week passes. There are options because the registration software we use creates a QR code or a barcode that people can use on their phones. Whether it's a day pass, it's only good for the day. They can scan it. Their profile comes up, and they can walk in. You know, we created a template of fees in 2020. Obviously, that's going to change today, five years down the road. But we did not put a fee structure together because we were uncertain as to where the project was going to go.
Okay, switching. I have the bid up for the, for Benton Construction right now. The removal and the leveling of the existing site, is that included in the number that's being asked for approval?
Yes, I believe so. I'm just taking a double check here. Yeah, it's at the bottom.
They have a generic amount per cubic yard.
Yeah, I do believe that is part of the scope of the work. I believe that is part of the lump sum.
Do we have any idea of cubic yards?
Don't.
I mean, the thought process and the question I have, is this a half-million-dollar removal and, you know, and testing and leveling of the existing site? Are we planning on turning that over to the construction company clean?
I believe that's all encumbered, like they're doing nuts and bolts, A to Z. So the thing that we had talked about in the past that we wanted to alleviate, and I know that, you know, I think I could speak for Rob Voltramitis on this one, was they didn't want Public Works to do the demo, have something go wrong, and then the contractor come in and say, "Hey, they didn't grade it or level it correctly. It was just encompass it all in one project and put it in the bid." And they come in, clear the land, level the land, and be prepped to build. So I do believe that's in the lump sum fee, which is the 8.768 million.
Well, then where are we coming up with the 9.3?
So
Is that the, is the difference?
So the picnic pavilion, all those things that add up brings it to the 9.3.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Michaels.
You're welcome.
Mayor, we had discussed, was there some discussion prior of what the demo cost was? Because I had a number in my head, but I don't want to say it if it's not
I had thought it was significant, you know, approaching the seven-figure range.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Counselor Allison. Thank you, Mayor.
Aye. So my question is kind of around, Counselor Regan asked my questions regarding, you know, ongoing maintenance because, you know, we just exited this budget season, and it was not easy. My concern is that we tend to approve things and then not fund them later. So I am concerned about that. And while I wholeheartedly support the pool in general, I also, you know, want to stress that one council can't make the spending decisions for a future council. So I, I know the ongoing maintenance cost is a question. I know it's not going to be as much. I want to say, I thought I saw some numbers back before I was even on the council I wanna say, I thought I saw some numbers back before I was even on the council, that it was in, it, it was in the six figures range for the annual operating back then.
I believe that's with staffing and everything included.
Okay. Um, regard, so my question, I guess now would be regarding staffing, um, and, you know, timing of usage. Could we, would this, um, enable us? I know this would, this splash pad would enable us to have longer, um, a longer season. Um, what do you envision that looking like as far as staffing for, I guess, supervision of the splash pad versus, uh, seasonality for the pool? I know, obviously, it's all speculation at this point, but...
I mean, a, a splash pad could technically be unsupervised. I mean, they, they are. I mean, if, if you want, if you're concerned about staffing costs, um, it's probably the prep and, and, and opening of it, and then the closing of it, so whatever the, you know, the staffing cost to do that. Um, you know, if we had to have a person on-site, you can probably do, you know, you're gonna have at least two if you wanted somebody on-site. But splash pads are independently run and self-sustained in other town, in other park locations in other towns. So that could be a possibility.
Okay. No, it's fine, I, I'm, I'm not really in the splash pad market myself, so, um, I didn't know that. Um, so that's nice. Um, uh, and then as far as the pool is concerned, um, like for lifeguards, um, would we be back to the old model of high, like, college kids? And it, it was just a really short season on the pool itself back in the day?
We'd be open to anything that we can utilize. You know, I know the lifeguard market is tough. Um, so, you know, we're not just gonna pigeonhole it to college kids, especially if we're going to... The pool itself would probably maintain something of a similar schedule, um, which I think we did like weekends. I think it was Counselor Chortel made a motion years ago, we did like weekends after Memorial Day to weekends to, you know, Labor Day. Um, you know, we, we'd have to get creative and figure that out if we wanted to open extended seasons and how we would staff it. Um, the summer months, I mean, that, that's probably gonna be the bulk of your staffing pool, is going to be college kids or, or potentially high school kids. So, um, you know, we'll have to see what happens.
Yep, for sure. Okay. Um, on the staffing piece, I, I'll, I'll call you separately, but, um, I was talking to Sean from the Y, so maybe there's some sort of a, something like with, like their partnership with Chortle that can be done.
I thought you wanted an application.
Oh, no. No. All right. Thank you.
No, no problem.
Uh, thank you, Counselor, uh, Tada. I'm sorry, Counselor Laughlin's next.
Um, I just wanted to thank the Once Brownies for their letter and congratulate you on the first-hand lesson in government speed, um, on your... Sorry, the, the response was seven years. Seven's my favorite number, if that means anything to you guys. Um, I wish I could tell you, you will find life to be different in your future experiences with all governments, but it won't be, so, um, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you for the supportive words, Counselor Laughlin. Uh, Counselor Tada?
Thank you. He's not wrong. Um, I have a, I'll, I'll just be upfront with everybody. I, I honestly, I don't know where I fall on this. I'm, I'm split right down the middle, and I'm, I'm gonna, I have some questions and some comments, I'm just gonna kinda go down my list here. Um, my first question, if we want to remove any items, if we are going to award the bid tonight, do we need to do that tonight? Cuz I think, I mean, I would amend, make a friendly amendment that we remove the sand volleyball, but I don't know if there's other things that, like, basically, do we reserve the right to remove that in the future if we award the bid tonight?
I don't, I don't, I'm gonna have to defer to Tim or the mayor. I think that we can, I mean, it, they're ad options, they're ad alternates, so we can take them out if we need to.
Okay, so even if we, even if we vote tonight to approve the bid from Banton, which includes that, then later down the road, we could say, we don't want X, Y, and Z. I just don't wanna get into a position where we awarded it and then they say, oh, no, you owe the full amount, because that's what was in the bid.
As a practical matter, um, if it gets to be the meeting where we award the bond, and you don't fully fund the bond, you're not gonna complete the entire project. So that, I don't see why you wouldn't get the opportunity to potentially reduce the size of the project at the bond meeting.
Okay. Can we make a friendly amendment to the motion just for the sand volleyball tonight, just to get that off the table?
I will accept it as a friendly amendment.
Yep. I'm in support.
A friendly amendment to remove the sand volleyball court?
And the motion was seconded by Sam. Are you okay with the friendly amendment? Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carmody.
Yeah, that just sounds like a, from what you're saying with the sand and the mess, and I, I don't see that that's a huge...
No, and, and, I mean, it was an ad alternate, it was an option, it was, I was never truly in favor of it, but now that I see that we have one in town that hardly ever gets used,
Yeah.
that it's like, it's just, it defeats the purpose, why would we have two?
That's the one I'm thinking of. I, I don't think I've ever once seen it used, and being near the pool with the sand, I think you're saying could be an issue, so...
Correct.
All right.
Hang on one second. Ms. Pans, are you, uh, you know where we are right now? Okay. Perfect. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. All right. That was that. Um, the, we already discussed this, but I, the cost of the demolition, I would like to get before... That, that's, that's actually something that's kind of, um, almost making a decision for me, because if the demolition costs are a huge part of this, then that kind of brings the cost of the pool portion down. In other words, if we have to demolish what's there anyway, and that costs, I don't know, I'm just gonna throw out something, three million dollars, and then we have to do something with that park anyway, then what are we really gonna get for six million dollars? So I think that, to me, is a big determining factor of whether I'm a yes or a no. Um, because if the demolition is a, is a large amount of money, then it makes the actual pool portion maybe not as expensive as it otherwise might be. Um, so I would like to get that number. Um... The other, the other piece that's missing from this, and I know everyone's gonna not like when I bring it up again, but we did vote, I bring it up every time, I've been bringing it up for years, we did vote this, uh, not this council, but I believe it was the prior council voted, um, April twelfth, twenty twenty-two. The motion was to authorize the rebidding of the community pool, and the rebid included to bid or issue an RFP to seek the cost of the renovation. Um, that was my motion, I've been asking for this for years. Um, I find it hard to make a decision on the new project when I don't know if it's possible if we could fix the old, the existing pool for a lower amount of money. And I know everybody says, oh, Christina, you're stupid, and you can't fix it, didn't you look at it? You went on the tour, and I'm saying it's politicians and lawyers telling me it can't be fixed, not a construction company. So I would feel much better if we had done the RFP, like we voted on to do the RFP, um, to have one of those companies say, no, you can't do this, or maybe they came back and said, yeah, we could fix this, it's gonna cost three million. And then we would have before us two options, three million or nine million. Um, or maybe it would be more, maybe it would be more expensive, but we're, I'm just, I'm missing that huge chunk of information, and I would've loved to have that. We voted on it in twenty twenty-two, we don't have it still, so that just doesn't sit well with me. Um, the maintenance part. So are we, is it your intent to staff this in-house? Cuz I heard something about the YMCA possibly, um, what, what is our intent? Are we trying to go with an outside contractor to staff?
No, so we're gonna staff it ourselves as far as the lifeguard supervisors, that stuff. We're not outsourcing any of the staffing.
Okay.
We would probably outsource the chemical contract, which we have done in the past. Um, it's always been done for, for the previous community pool, and I anticipate probably doing it again this time.
Okay. But staffing in-house, correct?
Correct.
Um, the season and the hours, it kinda sounds like you're maybe not sure, cuz it depends on lifeguards and, um, I, I guess what I would hate to see is we spend all this money and then we have, I know we, in the past, we had issues with it being a short season, or the hours weren't short, and I know we've also talked about, back in the, you know, in its heyday in the, in the seventies and eighties, um, people, you know, families would go, and I know a lot of, um, mothers that were stay-at-home moms that would go with their, their children for the day and spend the day, and I think society has kinda changed, and so people maybe aren't as home with their children as much in the summer. Um, so I would love to see maybe different hours or extended hours, um, so people after work maybe can go with their children. Um, is that anything that was discussed or talked about, the, the season or the hours?
So I think it's all gonna, a, as we're seeing now, is gonna be weather-dependent. So I think that the shoulder seasons and the extension would be with, with the splash pad, right? Still providing a, a cooling center on, on days of need. Um, I think the pool was probably gonna operate pretty similar to that extended schedule that we used in the last year of operation, where we would probably go to weekends, um, but it all depends on what we're gonna get for staff. I mean, things have changed in the last five years. So, you know, what we get for lifeguards and what availability's gonna be and what staffing's gonna be. I mean, it's, it's, that's tough to, to give a definitive answer as to what exactly the hours of operation are gonna be until we know what, what we're gonna look at for staff.
Yeah. Ideally, what would your season be for, for the pool, not the splash pad?
I think for the pool, like, the, you know, the weekend, school gets out, you know, until Labor Day. And, you know, school goes back, so, you know, obviously it'd be difficult to operate the Monday through Friday operation, but I think, you know, we saw that there was somewhat of a need on those weekends, um, especially late August into early September, when we were getting some of those hot eighty, ninety-degree days, we still had that option of having the pool open, you know, until Labor Day. Past that, you can utilize the splash pad. You know, at some point, though, the splash pad does have to be winterized, the lines have to be cleared, um, you know, so we don't get hit with any of that frost.
Yeah.
Freezing.
What would your ideal hours be for the pool? What are you looking to do?
It's tough. I mean, we've had success with that eleven to seven, and part of that was, um, you know, seven gives those people that, that do work um, the opportunity to come, you know, after five o'clock, and they can get, you know, an hour or two in to swim. Um, it's not gonna be lit, so, you know, once you get into dusk, you know, you, you gotta, you know, we wanna not have any potential hazards, obviously. Um, but the prior to the eleven o'clock gives us the ability to program, and, and we have the ability to program like we did in the past, where we did swim lessons from nine to eleven, or nine to ten-thirty prior to the pool opening. Um, all things that, you know, are on the board, you know, for us to look into, you know, if this project's approved.
Yeah, that, I mean, that sounds, those hours sound good to me in an ideal world. Um, the size we talked about, so I just want people to be clear, you know, people in the public to be clear, it's obviously much, much smaller than the existing pool, but I know that the, the committee deemed it the size appropriate for the amount of people we think. I mean, you don't foresee us turning people away, correct?
I don't.
Okay. Um... This is a question for Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. I'm gonna put you on the spot maybe a little bit. If, so I know in the past, the council has voted, and then the pre, prior mayor, um, didn't wanna go ahead. If, if we do accept this, is it, is it your intent to go ahead with this? Do you have more info you need to get?
I, I could've done a lot to prevent this project from coming before the council. So, uh, and I am on record as saying that something has to be done with that park. Um, if the council majority doesn't vote in favor of going forward with this project, um, something's gonna be done with that park. Uh, even if it's some type of smaller scale, um, you know, less expensive, in either event. From what I've seen of the existing pool, there's... I don't think you'll find another pool on the planet that was designed by, like that pool. Um, you know, the drainage system is covered with pavers. Um, the, the plumbing system that filters through the pool, um, the thought of having to repair that is frightening to me. The pump system, um, we've seen that. You know, I, I don't know what vehicle you use to cart that away. It's monstrous. Um, and my understanding from Public Works is every year that they did start that pump system, you know, it was fingers crossed and prayers that we didn't have, you know, the capacity of that pool running down Beaumont and North Main Street Extension because the failure, the system failed. Uh, so that, that's a long way to say, something's gotta be done with this park. Um, this project's before the council, and if the council is inclined to support it, then the administration is as well.
Thank you very much, I, I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor. Uh... So I guess that leaves... You know, it's hard, there's, obviously, and I'm sure this is on everybody's minds, but the, the timing and the optics of this right now with the tax increase is pretty horrible. Um, I know that's on my mind for sure, so it's, this is something that's not a must-have. Um, it's something a lot of people wa-want, a lot of people would enjoy, um, but coming right after this recent budget where it was revale, the majority of the increase is revale, which we couldn't do anything about, um, and then to, to spend this kind of money right on, on the heels of that is, is tough. Um, but then I look at some of the other things that we have in town that we spend a lot of money on and that serve a subset of people, um, the senior center, for example, um, huge cost to the town every year, and that serves a, a small subset of, of the town. So we have something here that's, you know, probably going to serve a, another small subset of the town, but it's gonna be predominantly families. Um, we heard from, um, some adults that said they would like to use it, I think the splash pad is huge. Um, so those are the things that make me wanna support it. Um, but the, again, the optics with the tax increase are, I think that's gonna be tough for us. Um, and right now, I just feel like there's kind of some unanswered questions, so we, we kinda don't know the annual cost right now. I mean, unless I misunderstood, we're, we don't really have a...
No, as far as the, today's cost of chemicals, we don't. Like I said, we, we didn't know where the project was going. So, you know, once it went out and came back, it's like, okay, well, let's see if we get the funding, and then if we get the funding, then we can figure out, okay, this is, this is how it's gonna operate. Um, so we, we didn't wanna put the cart before the horse.
Yeah, I understand that. I kinda, I kinda wish maybe we did, cuz I, I would love to know the annual cost before, before we vote on this, um, for staffing and for maintenance, but, um... All right, I think that's, sorry, that was a little bit rambly, just kind of all over the place with this and trying to decide what the right way thing to do is, but, uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
Uh, thank you, on to Counselor Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you, Director Michaels, for, uh, requesting the item. Um, so I, I, uh, I, I, I too, like the mayor, uh, am, am in favor of doing something there. Um, I was supportive of the original, basically the same pool proposal back when. Um, I, I am still in support now. I, I, I can respect the, yeah, the, I guess, the thoughtfulness about sort of like the timing of all of it. Um, but I do wanna point out, though, that this has gone up, uh, while not as much as we thought it might've been able to go up, it has gone up quite a bit since we went through this the last time, and if we don't continue to sort of move forward on something like this, it won't be any less to do any of it, even if it's just the excavation, which was like one point six million on the Downs estimate that we got, um, which I know was more than what this is, but just for reference. Um, I just think that we have to be proactive and keep investing in, in the things that are kinda gonna grow and develop our town. If we're looking to support senior housing and move folks from houses into senior housing to support younger families and homes, then we really should be thinking about our schools, which we're working on, but we also have to think about other things like pools. Um, I think the bonding element to this will make it a longer-term investment that we would be able to sort of absorb somewhat year over year, but it is an added cost, and I, I am respectful of that. Um, but I, I, I think that investing in our community, investing in places for families to go during the summertime, people who maybe can't afford to go away on vacation, or maybe people who can't afford to have a pool in their yard, or, or maybe people who just wanna spend some time somewhere, not in their own backyard, but with other people in the community. I think we need a place like that to go, and so, um, to that end, I, I, I support doing something with the park. Uh, to that end, I do support, uh, the pool, but, um, yeah, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. On to Counselor Testa.
Thank you. I would only, I'm, I'm simply gonna address the idea that, and I agree with this, that it, it could con- it potentially, uh, as Counselor Tada said, the optics can be difficult. Um, they can always be difficult, but this year of all years, and I was having a conversation with, uh, someone about this, and the, the concept, the, the idea was taxes are going up so much, and we're gonna look at investing in this this year. And my response to the, to that was, was this. Why are we in the situation we're in where our taxes have gone up so much? And a very large part of that, well, I'm not gonna exaggerate, perhaps it's a large part, but a, a, an important part of that is the, um, the lack of commercial development in the community, which is what drove this community for...
which is what drove this community for thirty years. Bristol Myers, of course, was a gold mine for us, but the Barnes Industrial Park, all of the industrial parks. We have benefited for decades from the fact that our grand list had an, uh, a very high percentage of commercial representation. That has gone down and at the same time, the revaluation kicked in and it's, it's hit us really hard. But we need to look at how do we fix that? We don't fix that by reducing costs. We can't just stop funding the fire department. We can't stop funding Public Works. We have to find new revenue sources and that can be, uh, new housing developments, bringing younger families in. But it has to revolve around, uh, attracting more business development. And this is an investment in making the community extremely attractive to a business. It may not seem like much, but we already have so much that we tout. Our electric, our school system, so on, our location. But a company that's looking to move here with maybe fifty to a hundred employees, and this is what's driven this town for years, the one hundred, two hundred employee R and D companies up in the park and so forth and so on, to be able to see something like this and them to say, wow, this would be attractive to my employees, to bring them to this community. This could be the one thing that triggers them to say, wow, this is a great community and look at this. And then they say, okay, I'm gonna pick Wallingford. So this is the type of thing I think that, uh, that we have all the arguments about how we all got our swimming lessons there and how wonderful this always was. But if we talk about this as a, of, uh, a, a, a s- a smart, fiscally responsible investment in the community to try to promote the development of our grand list, that, that might be something that, um, generates a little bit more support. And that's the point I would make. You know how I feel about the rest of it. So thank you for that.
If I can, and I, I totally agree with you, Counselor Tessa, that, and it's, it's a reinvestment in the community, right? We, we always talk about, you know, our park amenities. In, in twenty twenty, this project was in front of you and we talked about timing, right? And, and timing wasn't right because of COVID. And twenty twenty-one, we were back here at the table and timing wasn't right again because COVID was still here. But we weren't gonna open it then. It was gonna be fifteen months down the road where when COVID was over and we were out of the pandemic, we would have had a facility and a little bit less of a cost, but we would have had something that, we had that thing we can point to and say, hey, that, that's, that's our centerpiece to, to our town project. You know, I know there's some of you and some people in the public who like to point their finger and say, hey, this town has this and this town has that. Why don't we have this? Well, we had the opportunity to have this and we didn't move forward with it. And I think if we don't do it now, I don't see it happening.
Thank you. Also, Counselor Tessa. Thank you. On to Counselor Carmody.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I had a quick question for the Comptroller. This is gonna be a twenty year bond, correct?
Yes.
And do you, you have a sense of the interest rate that we're gonna get on that bond?
So when this comes back to you, it's probably gonna come back as a nine point five million dollar appropriation with a little contingency and some money for bonding costs. So running those numbers, I use three and a half percent interest. So the principal, so the interest would be three point four nine one two fifty over the life of the project. So just the principal and interest is almost thirteen million dollars on the project.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I wanted to briefly walk through where we have been on this journey to revitalize our community pool. A lot of this has already been said tonight, but I, I just wanted to remind folks that back in twenty fifteen, the Parks and Rec Department, along with the Parks and Rec Commission, began discussions with the town council about the need for long-term improvements to the pool. Uh, over the next few years, the commission and later the pool committee, uh, did the work that was asked of them. They studied, they planned, and they came back in twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen with clear recommendations for what this site could become. The pool, I believe, eventually closed around twenty nineteen. Is that correct?
It was a la- that was the last summer.
Okay, and it's remained closed ever since. In twenty twenty, the town council voted to move forward, uh, with a seven point four million dollar renovation plan, but that effort, effort was stopped and the project never moved ahead. And now, five years later, we are looking at a cost of nine point three million more with the bonding costs. Uh, it did not have to be this expensive, but the longer we waited, the more it costs. I do have concerns. I know others do. The price tag is significant and the timing, as was mentioned, uh, just after this year's budget is not ideal. But for me, this vote is about more than just the price tag. It's about whether we are willing to invest in the kind of community we claim we want. Because this is not just about a pool. It, it is about families, it is about young people, it is about public health and quality of life for all residents, children to seniors. Many of us grew up swimming in the community pool. I certainly did. It was a place where families came together, where kids learned to swim and where summer memories were made. But for at least the last, uh, the past six years, the experience has been unavailable to an entire generation of children in Wallingford. And that loss matters. What are we doing if we are not investing in them? Because right now, we are not. Our schools are crumbling, our parks and fields are neglected and this pu- this pool has been, has sat locked behind a fence while we debate its future year after year. We say we want to attract families to this town, but what are we giving them to come for? We talk about vision, we talk about planning, but none of that means anything without action. If we cannot even bring ourselves to restore a community pool, how do we expect to face the larger challenges ahead? And I will say this, because it's been clear, uh, to me over time. The obstacle to progress in this town is not abstract. It is often this council. Too often, this council has chosen to delay, to deflect and do nothing when something needed to be done. I want to believe that tonight will be different. So I hope this council will support this mosi- motion. I urge them to do so and make an investment in the people of Wallingford. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I actually think Counselor Laffin and Counselor Carmody kind of called it, because this is seven years in the planning, right? And so this was, this project started with a commission of our friends and neighbors that decided what they thought would be the best future of the pool. So this wasn't a council idea, this wasn't an administrative idea, this was a, a commission that was appointed to figure out what to do with the pool. And this is the plan they came up with. And so is it perfect? No, but, you know, like anything in government, you never have a perfect scenario, right? So the, the cost could be different. We could have done this a long time ago. But we didn't. And so here we find ourselves. So, you know, parks is a, is a core government function, just like police and fire, like maintaining parks is a core government function. So what we have here is we have a situation where we had a pool, where, which is now laying fallow with the weeds growing through it and so on. And we've, we've just elected to not maintain the park. So if you believe that parks are a core government function, at some point, you have to do something with this project, right? And I agree a hundred percent with the mayor that either we do the pool now or we have to turn it into something else. But if we turn it into something else, we're sort of back at square zero where now we're looking at, you know, however long, you know, a couple of years to come up with a plan to figure out what else we want to do with it. This is not a new pool. This is a rehab of the existing pool, something, a service that we provided for the community that we're no longer providing. I think if you look at the Southington Pool, Southington's Pool is packed all summer long, right? Weekends, weekdays, it's packed. And it's packed because it's something that families want to use, right? And so you could talk about, you know, the pool we had and the hours and so on. We're in a new ballgame now because we, it's not the same administration. This mayor is clearly much more open-minded about how the pools run, what the future of the, that park could be and so on and so forth. So, you know, sometimes it's kind of like your dreams are limited by your experience, right? We look at what we had in town and we sort of compare what we could have to what we had in the past. But it's not just a direct comparison. I mean, a, a town of our size ought to have a public pool, like this, this is just something that towns of our size have. Right? And I would never call Counselor Tada, you know, stupid for, uh, for thinking that we could rehab the old pool. But I think we all took the tour and I think, you know, there's a, like, you may not know pools, but you certainly know cars, because we've had a lot of car discussions before. You know, sometimes like the transmission goes in your car and you know you don't replace it. Anything could be repaired, right, with enough resources. But I think the pool is at a point where the transmission's gone, it needs a motor, like you just gotta put it out to pot and you gotta figure out, you know, what your next ride's gonna be. The last time we voted on this, we had six or seven affirmative votes to replace the pool, right? And now, but it is funny, as I look across the table and try to count the votes, we have a lot of new faces here because it's been that long to come up with a, with a replacement plan. I think Counselor Carmody said something about this council can be the barrier to progress. And sometimes I think, you know, you talk about timing and optics, right? This council's a bit like the mouse that when he goes to bite the cheese gets zapped by electricity, because that's how we've been for so long and we have, we haven't really come out of our, our shell to figure out what we could do as a council. So I'm encouraged, though, by this discussion and I think we're, I hope this project moves forward. Uh, I think this council could have a, a lot of say in the sort of how the future of what our town looks like. And I think the pool is sort of the beginning of us making a decision about, eh, eh, there's a lot of projects we gotta check off, right? A lot of buildings that need repair, a lot of areas that need work, but this is one thing that we could check off and move forward with and sort of restore what we once had. And I've said too much. Counselor Regan.
I could yield my time. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I like the idea of a pool. I've been a pool baby my entire life and I live near the water and I, I mean, that, that, that's part of my DNA. What I'm not in favor of is not having a package firmly tightened up with all the variables filled in. We don't fund, unless I'm missing something fundamentally, a range. A min and a max, it could be this, but it could be a million dollars more and it could be a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. We just went through a horrendous budget season where every dollar counted and every dollar does matter. So going into this tonight, I have to say no, because there's too many unknowns here. And if there were the, the, you know, if it, it, let's fund fifteen million, if, if, if that's going to be the vote and we can stockpile some chemicals, although that's a very bad idea. Um, you know, we can do a number of different things to, to, to put off some of those costs. I just think at this point in time, I cannot with good conscience, vote to fund when there's so much unknown in, in dollar amounts that exceed some of the reductions that we had to pass through for this budget. So with that, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Counselor Laffin.
Thank you. Um, I also never use the word stupid. The, we did, we did have that vote a couple of years ago, uh, and, and subsequently, um, there was another vote and I couldn't find it quick enough where the, the council kind of voted to, to cut bait and, and move on to a new pool. And, and I think that goes back, um, all to the fact that this, the pool as it is now is, or was, is a, a million gallon pool. It is the largest zero-depth entry pool cement pond in the entire country. I believe at the time, um, when it was active or it was ending its active range, the only larger pool what, like that was in Dubai.
If I may, it's actually not even a pool, it's an impoundment.
An impoundment. Great. So we can rename it to the Community Impoundment. There, there are, there are unknowns. And the unknowns are what got us here five, seven years later. The unknowns paused the project going into COVID. It was April two thousand twenty when we were talking about the pool. If there was ever a moment to be unsure and afraid of the unknowns, that was it. And it's, it's now been five years of, of climbing out of that hole and wish we had done it different, wish we didn't do it different. Can we still do it different? And, and that's where the ex- you know, the years just keep adding up. This is probably not perfect by any means for anybody up here. But as I often say, sometimes you, you lose a battle, but it doesn't mean you just throw the baby away with, with the, with the bathwater. You don't, you lose the battle, it doesn't mean you give up on the war. And I think we know we have to, I think it's safe to assume that the annual costs to run this pool, um, would probably be cheaper than running the largest cement impoundment swimming hole. It was a swimming hole. It was mud that they cemented, right?
Actually paved it. That, that's the other part of the problem.
It was a hole that they paved. Ray Ross, I think, was out there helping. Like he used to swim in it when it was muddy. Then when it was cement, right? Um, the optics are, are bad. They are hard, um, but we are elected to do hard things. Um, and, and, uh, Mr. Michaels and I have, have chatted briefly and, and timing becomes an issue. I would love to kick this down and fine tune everything and, and keep talking about and find out how many things are, you know, gonna cost what, X, Y, and Z. But if we, if we can move on this now, we're that much closer to opening this pool for next year or as soon as possible, or the year after, whatever it is. Uh, you said fifteen months?
I think it, yeah, if we stayed on the timeline now, um, we could potentially be open by next January. I mean, uh, next July, sorry.
Of twenty-six or twenty-seven?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, okay. So that's, that's kind of big. So those are all my comments. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're all very convincing over the years, because I went from a hard no, I think, when I first was on the council to now I'm fifty-fifty. But, um, at this point, my, uh, after listening to everybody, and I appreciate the discussion, because it, it does help. As of this exact moment, I'm, I'm where Counselor Regan is. I just, I don't like making decisions when we don't have all the info and I don't know how much the annual costs are right now. I don't know the exact cost of the bid, because if we take things out, um, I don't know what the staffing has to be. And I know, I, I would just, I would feel so much better voting yes if I knew all of that information. I hate to vote yes and then I find out, um, three months from now that the staffing is gonna be three times what I thought in my mind it was going to be. Um, so I just, I, I don't like voting on something with missing info. I, I'm considering a motion to table so we can put this on the next meeting agenda with that information. I don't think, I don't think that will pass, but, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw it out there, just, um, I'll move that we table this to the next, um, to the next regular council meeting, um, in anticipation of the requested information.
Second.
Okay, discussion on the motion to table. Counselor Tessa.
I, I can, I can appreciate that. My, I, I, it sounds to me like a, a lot of the objections, or at least the concerns, are about whether we should have a pool, not this pool. We talk about what's it gonna cost to run it. Those are, I mean, we've had a pool for years. So to discuss, well, what are the operating expenses going to be for this? What is it gonna, people, chemicals, all that stuff. All reasonable questions, but those are operational questions that come up when you're talking about running a pool that you've already agreed to have. So that, that's, that's what I'm a little un, a little uneasy about. Do you want to have a pool at all? Or do you have questions about this pool design? I actually have questions about this pool design. I came in here tonight prepared to say, listen, I, you know, I know that the, the, the big dollar figure is of a concern to people. And I was thinking, you know, do we really need this design? Can we just put a rectangular pool for the kids and keep, you know, in a section with the lap pool and the et cetera, et cetera. But, and then, you know, that would certainly have required a longer discussion and no decision tonight. If that came up, if we're at that point, if the point was in principle, we all want something there, but maybe the expense for this pool itself is a little too heavy. But I mean, what is that? Is it a million? I don't, I don't know. If we change the design of the pool, is it that much of a difference? And I really don't think that would be the case. To talk about what are the operating expenses going to be? What are we going to charge for tickets? What are we going to do for this? What are we going to do for that? If this council feels like those discussions, that data, that information, will inform a decision on this, I'm okay with that. I don't know how much they can really come up with, but I would imagine it would be based on past practice, past experience. We could get all that information. But what would worry me about that is if we go through all that, and then it turns out that, in some people's minds, well, this pool doesn't quite pay for itself every year. So, I don't think it's a worthwhile investment. That would upset me. Because, as has been mentioned before, we have many things in this town that don't pay for themselves, not even close. But we realize they are amenities. They are... They're... They are parts of the community that make it more attractive. So... I'm okay tabling out of respect for people that are showing, you know, an open mind, in my opinion, which I'm pleased to see. You know, I'm not sitting here thinking, man, if we could pull off five, we're done. Boom! You know? I love that, frankly, but that may not happen. And what's the point? I'd much rather have a lot more people on this council behind this and feeling comfortable behind it. So... But I would want to know that what we're asking for is reasonable from Park and Rec, and I don't think we're going to get to a point where we could say, you know, well, we can operate this... We can operate this facility at a 20% win or a 20% loss. You're not going to get there. You have no idea who's going to show up, you know? We have to commit to this. But if some information comes forward that makes some of my colleagues a little more comfortable getting behind the investment, I'm okay with that. I just think that we have a great opportunity here. We need to move. We have to wait a little bit. I'm okay with that.
Anyone else on the motion to table? Councilor Allison.
So, this can replace my other request, because it's more relevant here anyways. But so, not that I don't think that this is a great investment, but I will point out that this council did, with complete no numbers whatsoever, vote, negotiate against ourselves on Low Sap a few months ago, where we... I didn't. I didn't have the numbers, and in spirit of liking to have the numbers, I did not vote for it, even though I supported it. So, we still have not gotten those numbers, but we approved it. So, maybe this is a new council these days, and maybe we're in for a little risk. I mean, assume that the costs are going to be the same that they were before, because, as Mr. Michaels pointed out to me, a lot of that cost was probably labor. So, assume somewhere in the twos, right? And it may be less. But we've done other things in this present calendar year where we did not have all of these numbers, and it was... And it seemed to be a much simpler solution. So, I don't... I don't... Like, I can appreciate the spirit of the motion to table, but we've tabled this for seven years now. No more tabling. Take the vote.
Well said, Counselor. I attach myself to your comments. Councilor Laffin.
Yeah, I think we can forego the tabling, vote, get the numbers we want. I mean, we still have the actual spend the money vote coming if there needed to be an ultimate kill shot taken. So, that's just my take.
Thank you. Mr. Michaels, do you have something you want to add?
I'm just looking back at the previous presentation, and there was no figure presented previously that I can see as far as operating costs, and there was a vote taken twice. So, I don't... I understand your concern, and I'm a resident as well, but if a vote was taken twice, what's the holdup now?
Thank you, sir. Anyone else on the motion to table? Madam Clerk, would you kindly call the roll to table?
Allison?
No.
Carmody?
No.
Laffin?
No.
Regan?
Yes.
Reynolds?
No.
Tada?
Yes.
Testa?
No.
Moron?
I vote no, and the motion fails. Okay, so, back on to the base motion as amended. Any discussion on the motion on the pool? Anyone from the public care to comment on this item? Mr. Ross.
Ray Ross Silver Bond Apartments. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilman for the plug on that. I indeed did have some experience in helping to build that pool. When the pool was originally built, they dug a hole, they dammed the brook, the water came into the pool and went out the other end. And we, as kids, used to go up there and see how deep a hole we can dig in the water to make the pool deeper. So, thank you for that plug. I just have a couple of questions. I understand the current pool is a million gallons. Is that right?
That's correct.
And the proposed pool is how many gallons?
I don't have the gallons, but the square footage shrinks it from 40,000 square feet to 13,000 square feet.
15,000 square feet?
13, 1-3.
Okay, so, we don't know how... I'm concerned that we're going to put in four, my understanding, laps and lanes?
Correct.
Are we going to have a wading pool attached to that for the kids that don't want to go into the...
So, it's pretty much a... About 180-degree, maybe a little bit more, zero-depth entry, so similar to the setup now. So, they'd still be able to walk in, play up to their knees, and there is a portion that is, you know, what do you call it? Preschool-friendly.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else on this topic? Ms.?
Hi. Leslie Williams, 595 Woodhouse Avenue. I agree that it's... The optics are bad, but at the same time, we'll be getting something for those taxes. There are all the surrounding... Not all the surrounding towns. Many of the surrounding towns have pools, and some of them have multiple pools. We aren't allowed at Community Lake. We are... I mean, at Community Pool, we are not allowed at Sheehan Pool. I know we don't want to reminisce, but my kids swim at both. The only people that get to swim at Sheehan are the kids that go to Sheehan and nobody else. I mean, I'm sure people rent it or whatever, but we really need to have this. If we want to grow our town, it's just an embarrassment that we don't have a pool. And Mr. Michaels needs money to do these things, and it really shouldn't matter how much if he's doing it responsibly. We need to be able to get lifeguards at Sheehan in the evening. We need to be able to get the pool open. Putting it off another six weeks is going to be devastating. We need to do this. We need to do this now. We need to do things to grow our infrastructure here in town. I think I'll leave it there.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, I'll bring it back to the council. All right. Seeing none, Madam Clerk, kindly call the roll.
Allison?
Yes.
Carmody?
Yes.
Laffin?
Yes.
Regan?
No.
Reynolds?
Yes.
Tada?
No.
Testa?
Yes.
Moron?
I vote yes, and the motion passes. Seeing no other business on the agenda, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.